Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the Thursday, December 15th, 2022, regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask you please stand now for a brief moment of silence and please remain silent, for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. May be seated. We have some very special guests with us here on tonight, and I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy will come forward now and introduce them to us.
Thank you Chairman Patillo, and good evening to everyone as well. We're so pleased to have with us this evening the students from Mount Herman Preschool Center. But first, to get us started with the pledge of allegiance, we have Chance Kearney and Braylon Mansfield. If you all will come forward, and while you do, I'll read some information about these two students. Chance loves to play his Xbox, and his favorite food is macaroni and cheese. When he grows up, he wants to be an astronaut. Here to support Chance tonight are his mother and father, Jasmine and Curtis Kearney, as well as his grandfather, Antoine Kearney. And will the parents and grandparents please stand for all of these students?
Please stand. I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Next, we will have our school statement. And here to provide that, we have Noah Wright and Delilah Walt. And as they come forward, I will give you some background information on these two students. Noah loves playing basketball, and his favorite food is pizza. When he grows up, he wants to be a firefighter. His parents are Ebony and Nicholas Wright, and his sister Leah is here with us. Finally, Delilah has a new kitchen set that is her favorite toy to play with. She has two favorite foods, pepperoni pizza and pork chops. And when she grows up, she wants to be a singer. Delilah's mother is Rukia Pettis, and her father is Zachary Walt. She's also joined by her sister Aria. And parents for Noah and Delilah, please stand and be recognized. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, School Board Chairman, Ms. Atkinson, Vice Chairwoman, Dr. Bracy Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, I am Noah Wright, and we are pre-K students. At Mount Herman, we are superheroes. He will make here, and he will respect others. This has been an awesome year. We have been doing experiments in our community, math pattern, answering why and why not questions.
You ready, Delilah?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Delilah Walt. We have a great hall festival at school, and we're gained in a pumpkin patch and a petting zoo. Grandparent Day, or Thanksgiving London, what a bad day ever. Our winter gone there, what autumn too. Our community partners and parents have been a part of us.
Mount Herman is an awesome place to look. Now for the good part, we will sing for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. And I met Noah before the meeting started, and I was trying to get him to switch ties with me, but he wasn't having it.
I wish they weren't so young. I want to save them for last. Because I really don't want to hear anything else after they perform, so. But I was so full of joy just to hear them singing and watching them perform, and it reminds us that's why we're here and why we do what we do every single day. Dr. Williams, I give you the floor.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Patillo. First of all, I would like to thank our awesome musicians. On keyboard, we have our very own school security officer, Mr. Cook. Everybody loves Mr. Cook. He's doing double duty tonight, security and our keyboardist. On lead guitar, we have Mr. Raymond Bynum. Bass guitar, Mr. Paul Bynum. And on drums, Mr. Paul Bynum Jr.
So that's aka Brother Cook in the Parliament Funkadelic.
You should have seen them at Norcom the other night. They turned it out at Norcom. Thank you so very much for having us, for showcasing our boys and girls tonight. Thank you so very much. Have a happy holidays and a wonderful new year. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, we still have some more on the agenda to go. We're going to have our School Board mission statement by Mr. Vern Tillage.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
I'm here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. And Dr. Cotton had to leave early in Ms. Hines's home due to family illness on tonight. Consideration of the agenda for December 15th, 2022, you have it in front of you now, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Schumake. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. General number 5.1 and 5.2, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the School Board of the City of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the School Board, you must register with the Clerk of the Board ahead of the scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the Superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speakers' comments can be left with the Clerk of the Board, and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As a board opens to public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Ms. Robin Peel? Not here? Okay. Mr. Sergio Neal?
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, members of the School Board and the public. My name is Sergio Neal. I live at 1420M here in this great city of Portsmouth. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to Brighton and a job well done to Crowder Elementary School for their performances on last night, as well as the night before last. I have family in both, and both schools did an excellent job. I really appreciate the spirit in which they put their programs together and worked through all of the difficulties that can come with that when you're working with kids from the ages of pre-K all the way through sixth grade. So great job to both of those schools. Speaking of that, I'm here to ask if our school division can look into some audiovisual improvements for our elementary schools. Because as those performances was going on, I did notice the technical difficulties that they had, and I think that we all, as parents, wanted to hear our children and our grandchildren, our cousins, and all that very loud and clear. And it was a struggle at both schools, but they did what they could to make sure we heard them the best that they could. So I did want to make that mention. I would ask you all to look in the budget for the 2023 school year to see what we can do for our elementary schools and make sure that they have the best audiovisual equipment that they can possibly have so that those future rising stars can make sure that their voices are heard and their faces are seen all across the world. Secondly, I have to say thank you all for your due diligence and making sure that our students have programming in place that can address the traumas that they face on a daily basis, both in school and out of school. We greatly, you know, the community is very appreciative of that. I would also like to say thank you to those board members who have served their terms. I know this is a couple of you all's last School Board meeting. One of you all are going to city council, and I can guarantee the pressure is still on that side, too. So anybody that knows me know who I am. So we're going to make sure that we are paying attention all the way because we want to make sure that we are, you know, keeping those promises rolling. But anyway, you know, I do want to make sure that it is known that, you know, a lot of people don't realize the hard work that goes in day in, day out in our school systems. And, you know, I have watched and watched and watched. I'm a product of Portsmouth Public Schools. I've been involved in the schools. And I want to implore the community at this point to just make sure that when you are looking around for something to do or, you know, maybe a career change, look to Portsmouth Public Schools as a potential opportunity for you. You never know what you can maybe use for in. Because I did want to shout out, you know, that, you know, it was amazing to see that even, you know, at this damn time, our custodial staff is still struggling, but they did what they could to clean up after those events, and a lot of parents jumped in. And I said, hey, you know, there might be an opportunity for them to, you know, actually come on board as part of the team, you know, because they are a very intricate part of what school operations is all about. So just, you know, keep that in mind, public. And in closing, I would just like to say Merry Christmas to all of you, Happy Holidays to all of you, and I look forward to working And I look forward to working with the school division in the new year. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening.
No more speakers.
Thank you. Agenda item 6.1 is our school board representative report. She is absent tonight. She's battling illness as well. So we are sending our prayers and support with her, and we will receive her report in January. Agenda items 7.1 to 7.5 are consent agenda items. Now entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Schumake. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 8.1, monthly report from curriculum instruction, Dr. Calhoun.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, school board members, and all of you have joined us tonight. I'm Dr. Wanda Calhoun. I'm from the Office of Mathematics. You will find this month's update from the Office of Curriculum Instruction in your board docs. You'll also find a copy of the Portsmouth Public School Mathematics Instructional Model. This is something that we developed at the end of last academic year to try to put some structures in place so that our math classes across the city would look similar and really talk about how we would break up our math block as well as including the process goals from the Department of Education, sorry. The process goals help our students prepare to become mathematical problem solvers, have the ability to communicate mathematically, and to reason mathematically, to make mathematical connections, and to use mathematical representations to model and interpret practical situations which include real-world connections. So now we have a short video for you. The video will showcase some of our students, teachers, administrators, and how we're using Indy cars to engage students in mathematics. Thank you.
Okay, so basically what we did was we played a game where we solved questions. And no matter if you got them right or wrong, you'll put a tile down, and you had a card that would follow the path. And the object of the game was to get it to the red tile that you started with.
Well, I actually believe that this activity connected with all five of the math process goals. For one, the students were mathematical problem solvers. They had to really solve their multi-step equations. They had to verify their solutions, and they had to come up with some strategies. So they definitely were mathematical problem solvers. They had to communicate mathematically. They were working in pairs. And in their partnerships, they had to develop some strategy and work together, whether they were verifying a solution. So in order to do that, they had to communicate mathematically.
As I see them, some are just starting or by the number of actual tiles that they have down, that's showing me whether or not they understand. Also, whether or not they're actually showing their work, or I can even see which type they don't understand, whether they understand when it's no solution or when it actually has a solution. So I can easily assess by the number of tiles they have down and the number of problems they've worked out in the time that we've been given.
Also, if the tile order is off, it's probably because a certain type of question they are a little bit weaker in, or they don't have a strong understanding in. So that's something I'll be able to pinpoint immediately.
The activity tiers each student with the questions they're being asked. So if we have 80% of the group moving on to question C while 20 is moving on to question B, then that means that 80% moving to question C, that means 80% of the class doesn't understand what's going on at A while 20 does. So that's a good way to just tier it. And data-wise, it's just quick data that we gather while they're doing a fun activity.
Anytime a student has an opportunity to have visual representation and have hands-on at the same time, are the students fully take on the challenge? They get into it, they ask questions, and they not only want to accomplish the objective, but they want to be the best. They want to make sure they master that objective. They want to make sure that once they finish it, they can be proud of their product. So this type of instruction, I think, is beneficial for all students.
And one of the first things that I noticed right away is that there were no distracted students. And what that shows me is that they were really into what was going on in front of them. Students were manipulating, they were modeling, they were trying to figure things out, they were problem solving. To see students from start to finish engaged in the activity, really trying to solve a problem that existed in front of them and having immediate feedback as to whether or not they were getting the answers correct was really inspiring to me. And I know that it will be memorable for our students.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Calhoun. Wonderful video. I love the hands-on activity. I know that with the pandemic, mathematics was hit pretty hard. So I like the re-engagement with the hands-on activities. And I was reading in the report. I'm really happy to see that Portsmouth was selected to do pilot program for data science. That was something that I ran on with emerging careers and data science being one of the biggest ones. So that just really made me happy to see. And I'm looking forward to following up with that pilot program and seeing how it goes. So I just wanted to say kudos and whoever was instrumental in getting that pilot program in Portsmouth Public Schools. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other board members? Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Agenda item 8.2 is a report from WHR Educational Services. Now I have Dr. Bracy introduce our guest.
Thank you, Chair. With us tonight, we have Bert Schmidt, who's the president and CEO of WHRO. Along with him is Elmer Seward, who's the vice president of Educational Services, who's also in the audience. As you all know, we have a longstanding partnership with WHRO. And every couple of years, Bert will always come back and just share some of the things that we're partnering with WHRO with. So Bert, we'll turn it over to you.
Dr. Patillo, Dr. Bracy, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. As Dr. Bracy mentioned, my name is Bert Schmidt. And we come to you, Elmer and I, come to you every couple of years. We provide you every year a written report, which looks like this. But every couple of years, we come to you and just kind of summarize this report really briefly for you. So as I mentioned, you get the annual report for you. It is customized to this school division. So you'll note things in here that other school divisions don't get a chance to see. And I come to you, of course, because you are one of 21 school divisions that literally own the license to WHRO. We're the only public media, only media company in the entire country owned by collaboration of school divisions. When we were founded in 1961 by Norfolk and Hampton, and then we've grown over the years. And today, we're owned by the, basically, you can see the map, every one of the 21 school divisions throughout the greater Hampton Roads area. So what do we do? And I'm going to mention, everything I talk about tonight has been requested by the schools. We meet with the superintendents, school board representatives regularly. And throughout the years, everything we are doing has been a request from the schools. And we start with eMedia VA. We've been providing this service for about a decade. We have a contract with the Virginia Department of Education. And it's a repository of digital learning objects. Of course, digital content's super important in schools now. This is all correlated to the Virginia standards of learning. It could be a video, an audio, a picture, a lesson plan, a game, anything you can digitize, searchable by teachers, parents, students, and free of charge through the contract with the Department of Education. We partner with national organizations like the Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress. More importantly, we partner with all sorts of Virginia organizations, nonprofits, universities, museums, all sorts of groups, to bring great educational content into one place for your teachers to better educate our students. We're excited about that service. We do a lot of professional development for our teachers. You can see what we did this past year. This past year, of course, mostly in Zoom. We're hoping to get teachers back into our building to do in-person professional development as well. Online courses. So this has been a big thing that we started about 15 years ago where the schools knew that online learning was going to be a big deal. It was too expensive to do it on your own. But as a group together, we could create online courses. So you can see the list. There's about 28 courses. They're mostly high school, a few middle school courses. We make the course, and we give them to you. You put them in your learning management system, and you use them however you so choose. They're meant to be used with your teachers. It can be fully online, it can be flipped, hybrid, however you work it out. So, you know, sometimes the schedules don't work, you use online courses. But again, we're the manufacturer. These courses have all been requested by school divisions. You use them based on your own policies. Of course, with the courses that we make, they're meant for students. So we want to make sure they're the kind of courses that engages students. So we have a student advisory board from students throughout the region. They sit down with our team and make sure the way we're delivering the course is accessible and interesting to our students. The previous governor, Governor Northram, reached out to WHRO to work with his Commission on African-American History, as well as the Department of Education. And we developed the first African-American history course in the Commonwealth. That was a couple of years ago. You guys were frankly a pilot school a couple of years ago. Now it's available statewide to every division as an elective. So that's, we made that possible. We do a lot of work in the environmental space, environmental education. We were recently honored nationally with a program we've put together, which includes our Green Beat series. You may recall, if you're of a certain age, Schoolhouse Rock. For some of us, we remember those. Well, we've done a similar thing using local musicians and our own animators to do a series both on health, our Health Beat series, and most recently, our environmental series called Green Beats. We've partnered with our vans and some technology to do a great project.
Everybody say Green Beat!
With an entertaining show, a colorful van, interesting lessons, and engaging interactives and games, the WHRO Environmental Van Experience is much more than a great collaboration with the Virginia Stage Company. It is a highly immersive and memorable way for students to become the environmental stewards of tomorrow.
So that program is available, of course, free of charge. Just call up the station. We'll have the van and the technology. Stage Company, we all come out, work with your youngest students, and teach them lessons around environmental issues. So that's a fun activity, way to engage students. We love to celebrate smart kids. We do that a number of ways. The PBS Kids Writers Contest has been going on for almost 20 years now, I would say. Children K through 5, they write stories, they illustrate them, they send them in. We have a judging panel. And then we take the winners of each grade level, and we create a TV show out of it. They come, they read the stories, we have a whole celebration. And the winners end up being on TV, reading their stories to a television audience. The Spelling Bee, we've been doing for 15 years now. We'll be back. I'm thrilled to say we're not going to have a Zoom Spelling Bee this year. Be back in person. This is really for grades 6 through 8. You have your local middle schools do the local bee. The winners of each building come to our bee, which is going to be in the spring. And the winner of our bee goes to the National Spelling Bee. And I'm convinced one of these days, we will have a National Spelling Bee winner in Hampton Road. So looking forward to having your students, champions from your buildings, come to regional bee this spring in person. And some of you may be of an age that you participated in the Great Computer Challenge. It's been going on now for 37 years. Teams K through 12 come together, they compete in various software programs and languages. It's a whole event over on the campus of ODU for many students, the first time on a college campus. And they get to compete, and it's regional-wide. And this has been going on, again, for 37 years. During the pandemic, before the pandemic, we used to go out and do a lot of reading to students. We have a significant early childhood education department. They would go out, they would read books to students. But the pandemic hit, couldn't do it. So we created a Facebook series called Martha Reads. You can see Martha Razor right there. She leads our department there. It became so popular that we continue it, even though the pandemic's kind of behind us now. And so every Friday, 10:00 AM, she reads actually one of the stories from the PBS Kids Writers Contest. So these kids who write the stories have their stories read, and then through Facebook Live. And of course, they're all archived on Facebook. That's been wildly popular. We have three vans that go out. And so again, just call us. We've got our literacy van, the environmental van, and a STEM van. All the vans have the characters they're familiar with from our TV stations. And they're all lesson plans to work with your, again, your youngest students, K through 3rd grade, basically. And what you care most about, before I do that, also on, I won't, but on page nine, we did something special this year for the Portsmouth School Education Television Department. They requested a number of TV shows from us. And so we provided a list. It's on page nine of your report. And we provided them three years' worth of those TV shows for no charge. So there's a whole list. You'll see the list there. As requested, we coordinated with the division to make sure those television shows were available on your TV station. But again, as board members, what you really care about is the return on that investment. And in Portsmouth, which would be on page 13, but we provide you, you provided us last year $38,000. That's basically $3 per student. You received value in savings last year of $542,000. That's a 14-to-1 return on your investment. If your broker's doing that well, let me know. We're going to change brokers. But with that, we are happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, sir. I'll open it up for any board members at this time. If we don't have any questions, I also want to thank Vice Chair Atkinson for her service to WHRO committee on behalf of the Portsmouth School Board and Mr. Schmidt for his years of service to the division. Thank you so much, sir.
And I just want to thank Dr. Bracy. He also serves on the governing board. So I appreciate your leadership. Thank you. Thanks. Have a good holiday.
You, too. Agenda item 8.3, Purple Star School recipients. So tonight, we're excited to publicly honor three of our schools for earning the 2022 Purple Star School Designation. The Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children recognize schools as Purple Star Honor Reeds when they have demonstrated their commitment to meet the needs of military-connected students and their families. Schools do this in a number of ways, including by providing resources and programming on issues important to military families, such as academic planning and transitions between schools, divisions, and states. So Victory Elementary School, Churchland Elementary School, and Churchland Middle School were all named Purple Star Schools. In earning this designation this year, these three schools will hold this honor for the next three years. This spring, a new cohort of schools will begin the application process. Here to celebrate with us tonight is Victory Elementary School Principal, Dr. Wayne Williams, Churchland Elementary School Principal, Dr. Jamil Jones, and Churchland Middle School Assistant Principal, Dr. Keisha Coleman-Pender. We have the honor of presenting Churchland Middle School and Churchland Elementary School with their Purple Star medallions and certificates. Now, as the board knows, Victory Elementary School was our division's first-ever Purple Star School, airing it back in 2019. Victory has recertified this year and already has its medallion certificate. But join by giving all three of these administrators a hand. Agenda item 9.1, Student Discipline. Consideration of readmission, case number 2022-23/02. And the vote will be for readmission to new directions for the remainder of the year. and the vote will be for readmission to new directions for the remainder of the year. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Thomas. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Recuse me myself.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Six yes, it passes.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 10.1 is the monthly report from our superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, sir. Good evening once again to you and the board members. It's wonderful to be here this evening as we bring 2022 to a close, and I'm sure we're all looking forward to what 2023 will bring. As in December's meetings pass, I will keep my comments brief, but I do have a couple of reminders for our staff and families. First off, I want to reiterate that our winter break will begin next week. Tomorrow, we will have an early release for all students. Then, as a reminder, we did extend winter break by one day. So all of our schools and administrative offices will be closed from Monday, December 19th through Monday, January 2nd. We will now return back into the new year on Tuesday, January 3rd. While on break, I do want to encourage our families to stop by our first-ever art educator exhibition that's on display. All 27 art teachers from our division submitted original works for a special celebrating educator's exhibition that is on display now through January 26th at the Book Club, which is right here on High Street. This exhibition celebrates the creative accomplishments of our teaching professionals, which in turn will help inspire engagement in PPS arts programs and showcase more excellent talents we have here in our city. Last Friday, there was a special reception for this exhibition where our music students added to the evening by performing some holiday classics for the attendees. I want to thank all of our teachers for submitting to the, to the exhibit, and thank our visual arts coordinator, April Tello-Martin, for making this possible. As I close, I want to wish our entire Portsmouth Public Schools community a happy holiday season and a happy new year. From our students and families to our staff and education partners, we are grateful for all you bring to this division and all of the great things that are still to come this school year. Thank you for your continued support and work, and I hope you have a wonderful, relaxing winter break. Thank you. Chairman, that completes my report.
Agenda item 10.2 is Board Member Comments.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. Really quickly, I just want to run down a few things. I want to thank Crowe Up Middle School for hosting an event on November 29th, and also it was in collaboration, well, not necessarily collaboration, was a lot of different community members there. And so specifically, YME, which stands for Young Men in Engineering, is a mentoring program, which is a collaborative group from Newport News Shipbuilding. And so they are taking applications right now for the mentoring program starting in January 2023. So if your child attends Crowe Up Middle School, please reach out to the administration and get some information on that particular program because I know it will be extremely beneficial. Also, I would like to congratulate Mr. Brandon Hillman, who goes to Churchland High School. He has committed to the University of Notre Dame. So I want to congratulate him as well as his family. That is a big deal. Awesome. Him and my son played Little League, so I'm, you know, the babies are growing up very fast. Also, I want to thank Norfolk State University, my university, behold, for hosting us once again, and us meaning the JV and Varsity High School basketball teams, girls and boys. And so we actually attended last night. I am halfway exhausted still, but it was a wonderful game. Norfolk State won, and Manor attended as well as Churchland. Norcom had a game. But I do want to say thank you again for your continued support. This is something that we do every year, and we offer, with my collaboration with Norfolk State University, Mr. Coach Robert Jones, as well as the athletic department, they are truly a blessing, and they offer for the kids to come back in the spring. So we really appreciate you all for everything that you do. Before I leave, I want to say thank you to specifically, and not to leave anyone out, the coaches. Coaches do get a bad rep a lot of times, so I want to say thank you because the coaches were there last night with me, and we didn't leave until after 10:00. And so I really do appreciate every coach that take their, take the time to mentor, because that's essentially what they're doing. They're mentoring these children, and they're almost like a second parent. And so I want to just thank all of the coaches who take the time to be with these children and help mold these children, as well as our teachers and our staff. I want to say happy holidays to everyone. Thank you for all of your hard work. Again, before I leave, I want to say thank you to the Honorable Costella Williams for serving your time with us. You are an inspiration. We appreciate you. And I know this is your last time, but we have your number, so we will contact you if need be, but we do appreciate the time that you've served and you being not just an inspiration, someone to aspire to. So I appreciate you. Also, I would want to congratulate Vernon for moving up, okay? Moving up. I want to congratulate you. That is a big win, and so I know you're going to make us proud. You're going to do wonderful things on City Council, so, you know, thank you all, and I hope everyone have a wonderful and a happy holiday. I have to leave because I have to go pick up my son from track. Love y'all.
Vice Chair Axon.
Thank you, Chair. So the PPS MWBE Committee, we've been busy. We actually extended a marketing campaign outside of Small Business Saturday for the businesses that were in our directed, our directory. So this is what we did. We created a flyer with all of their information on there, and we distributed the flyer to Portsmouth City Hall. Businesses in Portsmouth, we've been doing some grassroots posting the flyers everywhere. We also paid for 15 and 30-second slots at the radio stations, and I'm just going to say those, 88.1 Hampton University, WNSB 911, Norfolk State University, WGPL 1350 AM, WPCE 1400 AM, and WBXB. So all of these businesses have individual ads on those radio stations. So I want to thank April Austin at 95.7. We're working on getting some ads on 95.7 now. Thank you to Jay Ling, Tony Jones, Marketing and Engagement Manager at Norfolk State University, and also, again, April Austin. She's with 95.7, but I want to shout out her business. She's the owner of JDK Productions LLC. Outside of that, we sent out our greeting cards. Our WBE administrator sent us an email, and we emailed over 406 recipients. That included the school board, MWBEs we work with in the 757, the Virginia Legislative Black Caucus members, Hampton Roads clergy, PPS administrative staff, PPS bookkeepers, Virginia SBSD officials, and the Portsmouth Congressional delegation. So this is all we've been up to, and I want to just thank Gwen Davis again for all her hard work with the committee. And lastly... Lastly, farewell for now. Honorable Costella Williams, thank you for your service, and also best wishes to Honorable Vernon Tillage on your move to City Council. And thank you both for your service on Portsmouth PPS, Portsmouth Public School Board.
Any other board members? I was waiting for everyone else to finish before I make any comments.
I'm really quick.
Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Is it working? Is this thing on? Hello? I'm really quick. I just want to say happy holidays. Thank you to all, Dr. Bracy, all the executive staff. Thank y'all so much for just all the hard work that's put in, even the work that, you know, while we're saying on break, we know even Mr. Falk, for example, will be working on preparing some numbers, and the work doesn't stop. So I just want to say thank y'all for all the hard work that you put in. Also, last but not least, thank you to the Honorable Costella Williams for, again, echo what everyone else says, your mentorship, your leadership, your support, your pushback when things are not right. Just thank you for being you, and thank you also for, to Honorable Vernon Tillage, congratulations. Thank you for serving. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and congratulations on your move to council. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I forgot to mention, I want to make sure that, you know, happy holidays to everyone. Your gift is in front of you, as you probably knew that it would be coming. And I will say, Ms. Williams, thank you again for coming back and supporting. I've got this memorizing now. I think we've done this at least two or three times. Yeah. So definitely appreciate all the support that you've given throughout my tenure here as superintendent. So we will still continue our 11, or maybe midnight calls. Yeah, yeah. And Mr. Tillage, it's been a pleasure and honor to work with you as well. Look forward to the continued partnership with you going up to City Council. As a former board member, one thing I can tell about councilmen or councilwomen that have gone on from here, they've always supported the school division. And I know that, and I know that will not stop with you. I just want to say thank you.
And I have also given this speech about three times already, so I do want to thank Ms. Williams again for her time, and just know that she will still continue to be a phone call away in her voice when we are in trouble and need some help. I give her that call. And for always being a strong advocate on behalf of Portsmouth Public Schools in any arena, I definitely thank her for that, for her 12 elected years and her two additional terms returning to the school board. So thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And to Mr. Tillage, as Dr. Bracy stated, we're counting on you to hold us up on City Council, and we're happy and excited for your promotion to City Council. Right. And with that being said, so as of December, the end of December, we will have a school board vacancy due to Mr. Tillage moving up to City Council. So we will have an application process, and the application will be posted on our website beginning January the 4th until January the 18th. So we're encouraging members of the community who are residents of Portsmouth and advocates of the school division to apply for that. And also, I want to also recognize our newly-elected school board member, Ms. Quineia Futre, who's in the audience as well. And we're looking forward to serving with her starting January 1. We're going to put her to work, so we're glad to have her here. And I also would like to recognize our city attorney who's present with us on tonight, Ms. Graham Williams. And I'd like to thank her for her consistent presence at our school board meetings, and also speaking up on behalf of school where I've been watching the meetings when necessary. So thank you so much for that as well. If there are no other, oh, Mr. Tillage, I am Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
You didn't let us go without saying anything.
Oh, I thought you were asking.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo, and of course, as they said, the third time is the charm. So I'll take some comments from Councilman Battle's speech last night when he was leaving. He said, he, he won't be like General Bugoffa. I will be back, though I won't be back. He said he'll leave it like General Ike. I'll come back if you need me, if I have to. But it has been my pleasure and honor to serve on this board, and with all the drama that goes on in the city, I can say that the school board, that we got along very well. Even though we might not see eye to eye on everything, we, we knew how to disagree without being disagreeable. So I leave here feeling very good. I've enjoyed working with Dr. Bracy, and I think he's one of the finest superintendents in the state of Virginia, or the world, put it that way. But I've made this speech, what, three times? So last time is a charm, but as I said, Dr. Patillo has done an excellent job as chairman of this board, listening to everyone, trying to bring everybody together, and to the staff. Whenever I've called on anyone, Dr. Bracy, like I said, midnight hour, he always responds. So again, thank you, PPS. I still have two grandchildren in PPS, so I'm still around the corner. If you need me, call me. I don't have to be on the board to step up and fight for Portsmouth Public Schools. Thank you.
And thank the board for the continued support since day one, being on board. Being the youngest person on the board, I've gotten a lot of guidance from many of you all. I've enjoyed the, the learning experience. I've enjoyed the camaraderie of getting to work with you all. The staff of PPS is phenomenal. I think I've already shared this publicly, but Lauren is probably, no shade to nobody else, she's probably my number one favorite, staff member in Portsmouth Public Schools, and I would love to take her to the city of Portsmouth. But she does such a great job.
I take back what I said about you.
Yeah, you're going a bit too far now. Look, you can go and leave now.
But, um...
Cut his mic off.
But in all seriousness, I do appreciate the support, the experience that I've gotten. I'm looking forward to continuing the wonderful partnership with the school board on City Council, and I pledged, like I did on my campaign, to continue to support public education and making sure that students all across the city, regardless of demographics, regardless of zip code, receive the best quality education, and making sure that Portsmouth Public Schools is on its way to becoming the best division in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And before I conclude, I just want to make sure I tell Kathy that on the, Ms. Kathy, that on the next conference, I want to book their Uber trips, and they know why. And so make sure they have a very good, a very good ride. And so it's an internal joke. It's an internal joke. But, um, but thank you all so very much, and I look forward to our great journey ahead.
Thank you so much, sir. Are there any other comments or concerns at this time? And now to this meeting adjourned, thank you so much, and have a happy holidays.